Did he send the bill or through to you?
But um I think it must've come in the mail maybe.
Make sure I'm on the same page.
I think it was, well, just last year he emailed them to me and then I replied, oh, I didn't get it.
It didn't go through you?
No. I'm trying to pull a short quote from last year.
Okay, and it'll be interesting to see if it goes four thirty-four each time.
So it was four oh six.
From four fields?
I believe so. And there were only four rounds. So there was one. They were spaced out, so maybe that was round four.
No, it's not.
But it all should've been launched here.
Yeah.
Yeah, round four should've been done in the fall.
Okay. I can look, I can actually show you the invoice.
It looks like he did charge four thirty-four last year. Oh, because of sales tax. So it was four oh six and then he added sales tax for a total of four thirty-four.
And we don't pay sales.
I know. That's, I said, that's just the invoice from April of last year.
No, I'm looking, no, reading or trying to.
That was messer, was it, wasn't it?
Yes.
All right, at this time, I would call an order to regularly schedule the town council meeting for Thursday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. I'd ask everybody to please stand in the lodge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Chad Blake?
Here.
Brian Robertson?
Here.
Roger Faust?
Present.
Gary Shuck?
Here.
And Lindsey Washmuth is not here today. We also have Evan McMullin as our legal team.
All right, uh, next thing on the agenda is public comments and concerns. Uh, anyone that has a comment or concern about anything that is not currently on the agenda, uh, come on up here to the podium. Uh, state your name and, uh, what your concern is.
Good evening, my name's Dennis Price. I sent a letter, uh, in regards to a water leak on my property at fourteen twenty-seven North Ford Street. And do you have any response towards that letter?
Uh, who did you send that letter to or where did you transfer it?
The one I gave it to you the other day that you said that was due to go to John.
Yes.
I talked to John, it's back to you guys.
Okay.
I don't know what to do.
Gotcha. John, do you have, what's the story on the, the water leak there?
Story on the water leak is this, his driveway was leaking, um, on Ford Street and Mary, Mary was in charge then. Um, she asked him, since it was his, his water line, we didn't know whose it was. Um, if he got a plumber out there and dug it up and if it became our responsibility, we would fix it for free and reimburse him for the plumber. Well, it became a line that nobody even knows about, going through his property from main to main.
So it's a, it's not the line to his house?
It's not a service line, no, and we checked every service line around, uh, with a four-house radius on that side of the road and the other side of the road. And it's a one-inch galvanized service line and people were speculating it was for a golf course that was back there that nobody knows about, but I don't know if it was back there or not. But anyway, it's a live line and, uh, he had some plumber or excavator or something out there, they dug it up. And, uh, they found it and there was two leaks, two holes. And they wanted me to shut it down, well, we have no valves to the line, we have no idea about, so it couldn't be shut down. And I called Gary and told Gary the situation and Gary said it's a leak, fix it, so I climbed in the hole and I fixed two leaks with two covers. Um, I guess it's re- reappeared its ugly head out there, I don't know.
Gotcha, okay. So.
It's treated with water.
Yeah, it's, it's not connect, it's not connected to anybody, it's just linking two mains together?
Yeah.
That if it were removed, it would be?
I believe you are correct, it's linking two mains. The problem is, we can't get a back truck or anything back there where that main is on the backside of his property. Now, it's gotta be coming to the front, which that, that main was supposed to be replaced by Atlas, I hate to even bring that up. But, uh, there's like an inch and a half that goes down Ford Street and we think it's connected to both of them. We need to just isolate both ends, cut and cap them.
Okay.
But it's enough, I mean, that's not up to me either, so.
If you bring the back truck to my property if you'd like, it's easy access to the back there.
If you're okay with that, we'll get it, we'll get with you and.
Coordinate with him, since he's gonna allow access, uh, so do you have a, a bill or an invoice from the work that was done?
No.
Okay, okay, so yeah, let's, let's try to eliminate it.
Isolate that?
Yep, isolate it, remove it and over from there.
Good.
Very good.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Good evening, my, my name is Robbie Slaughter.
Hit the, there's a button there on the mic, get it here, there. There you go.
Good evening, my name is Robbie Slaughter and I'm running for the U S Congress from our district as an independent candidate. Our district is the fifth and it includes all of Madison County as well as Tipton, Howard, Delaware, Grant, Hamilton counties as well. As an independent candidate, I have to get over seven thousand individual signatures merely to be on the ballot for November. And that's what I'm doing tonight, is I'd like to ask any citizens here who are willing to help me get on the ballot as an independent candidate to sign my form. This doesn't obligate you to vote for me or even to vote at all, but it's necessary for independent to run. I want to remind you that party candidates are not required to do this and in fact, simply by filling out one piece of paper, they able to run in their primary and then in the November election. Again, my name is Robbie Slaughter and if you want to help me get on the ballot, I'd appreciate it, thank you so much.
Yep.
Very good.
Dan Delve, the State thirteen oh one, North Year Eight.
Nope, don't have to give your address.
Well, anyway, so what's the, what's the status on the water? I mean, we're getting back to the spring weather here, are the, is that what's gonna come in and finish this project or are we going in a different direction?
That is. That is something that we as a council are working on through legal. So, we, we, uh, we are working on that and we should have an update at the next meeting.
Fair enough.
Yep, all right, any other? All right, very good. All right, next on the agenda, presentations, we have McGuire here, uh, they are here to talk about water tower maintenance and, uh, step on up.
Uh, good evening, my name is, uh, Dan Morrow, I'm with McGuire Water. I live down in, uh, Rockport, Indiana, I'm a local, in-gather resident. Um, I put together a proposal based off of the Pittsburgh, uh, quote, or inspection that you have done. And tried to come up with some numbers to help you get your water tower up to specs and I'm here to answer any questions that you have on that project.
All right. So if I remember correctly, here's, I flip through your packet for a refresher. Um. You had this broken down to a three-year plan. Uh, so, uh, year one, uh, year two and year three, each one would be different level of service, um, at a seventy-two thousand dollar cost per year, correct?
Right, that was to do all of the repairs and the exterior paint in year one and spread the cost over three years so that the town didn't have to try to come up with all the money in year one.
Gotcha. Uh, and all of that information is based on the inspection that was already done, correct?
Yes, they did have a couple of items in there that was unnecessary.
Okay.
Uh, so I did not put those in, but everything that's in that quote is listed on page one, two and one and two right there.
And then, uh, if I remember correctly, you guys offer a annual maintenance plan beyond that?
We do do a maintenance plan, in fact, I think it's on that front cover. Uh, it shows it on the left, I believe, there.
A.
Yeah, the far left. The maintenance plan, um, after the tank is up to, up to snuff, you know, when you got all the standards up to, up to speed, then you're looking at a fifteen to twenty thousand dollar a year maintenance plan that would cover all future cleanouts, inspections and paint jobs.
Is that a year-to-year or is that something that we signed up for?
It is a year-to-year and, and I can't stop it, only you could by non-payment.
Gotcha, okay. All right, questions from the council?
Do you have, I know this is, it's probably been seven, eight months ago with that last bid we got, and it had paint in it.
I don't, I don't believe it did. And that was for more total dollars, dollars, water tower.
I don't, I'm not sure on that either.
It was for a fresh, it was for a rain clean.
Yeah, it was just a clean.
It was not a paint job, but I think.
Gotcha.
The situation that you get to is if you go too long on that exterior paint without putting an overcoat on, then you don't have good enough adhesion for the exterior paint to stay. If you end up in a full blast again, the curtain alone is about a hundred thousand dollar. Uh, just the canvas to protect it when you sandblast and repaint. Um, so you try to keep those situations as far apart as possible.
Gary, Roger? I'm just looking over. Just look it over.
Sorry, I didn't want to include the maintenance plan in what I proposed right now because I didn't want to muddy the water with extra expense.
Right, 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 it's, I'm, I'm asking for the, once this is done, then it's the, how do, how do we keep it from getting to this point?
Exactly.
In the future is the, the, the goal, obviously.
So the total cost is two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
Over three years.
And you spread out over three years.
Yes.
Absolutely, so, uh, this is Dan, he is on our interview.
I know, but we're in there.
Yeah, I know you guys were having a little reunion there earlier, so.
You got, do you have a spec on thicknesses and everything, I, I haven't seen that, I'm assuming if you got a spec on thicknesses and all that stuff?
There was a spec in the Pittsburgh, uh, report saying how, how big the, uh, hey, what, I don't recall that off the top of my head, but it, it was thin that we could still do that.
So you're doing an overcoat, not a complete blast?
Yes.
Okay. Is there enough bad spots that you would have to do a blast in certain spots?
It would be a hand tool clean in those spots and there, there are a couple. There's a line up there, so there's.
And, and just to be clear, this is exterior tank repairs, this isn't, there's not a quality issue inside the tank.
There is an interior ladder.
Other than, the cleaning, but it's not a, there's not, there's not an issue with the tank that's causing a water quality issue.
No, the interior, the interior paint looked, from the report, looked like it was pretty decent.
So you're not touching any of the interior, are you gonna take the tank down?
You will have to take the tank down during the paint job because you can't have water in the tank when you're doing the exterior paint.
Okay.
So there's something we need to do a research and consider, so.
Do you have variable speed drives on your pumps?
Yeah, we have these.
With the variable speed drives on your pumps, you can put a couple of pressure relief valves in town and maintain pressure pretty well with just your pumps. The point would be that you would wanna do it as quick as possible, so do as many of the exterior functions before actually taking the tank out of service. And then taking the tank down and try to do it as quickly as possible.
How long would be a service for that paint process or something?
Depending on the weather is the biggest issue. Um, they tell us to say it's gonna be four to six weeks, they try to do it a couple, but it really does depend on the weather.
We had it down all summer in two thousand when we took it out of service and did the exact, put the pressure, pressure valves at the end out in Montgomery Farms. And run off the pumps. And we've got better pumps now than we did then.
We also, we also, um, supply for an extra fee, uh, an actual pressure tank that you can pressure the whole town on, but if you have variable speed drives, you really need to really go down that road.
Uh, Mr. President, payback?
Yes.
So in regards to the terms, uh, net thirty, uh, plus applicable sales tax, use excise, transfer or similar taxes required by law and a service fee charging one and a half percent per month, annual rate of eighteen percent per month. If it, again, goes past due, uh, the town's not gonna be able to agree to those terms, so we do not pay sales tax, right, uh, additional tax.
Of which that's only some, uh, in there if you have to pay sales tax. This is a blanket contract based on twenty-five states that we work with in, so.
Sure, so.
So if you're not applicable to sales tax, then it's not applicable to you.
Additionally, the one and a half percent, we're not gonna be able to agree to that, I don't think I've charged, so we can't, we can't predict whether or not the council will approve claims or not and subject the taxpayers to an increased amount over that time, so that's gonna be, that will need to be removed from the contract. Additionally, also, when it comes to customers, your customer shall be reimbursed by the company for all travel, meal, entertainment expenses, et cetera. I don't see a problem with that, other than for the fact, again, sales tax, that'll need to be removed from those invoices as well.
Whatever, if you would, uh, send me an email?
Sure.
Of what you want removed from the deal, I'll run it up the ladder to our contracts department.
Okay.
Have them prove or disprove.
Okay, thank you.
One question on that GS nine subversible mixer?
Yes.
Is that a two twenty?
No, that's a one ten.
One ten?
Yes.
Good.
And you leave it on all the time, we'll actually run conduit down to the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
There'll be a junction box up on top and then we'll run conduit down to the bottom. We will not connect it to your city power, that'll be up to your electricians in your town, but, um.
There is power already up there, but.
You just put, uh, we can't connect to the power, I, I don't have electricians in every state and all of that.
Okay.
But we'll run the power down to the bottom to where you can hook up to it and then, uh, just, you just have to hook it up to a breaker.
Good.
Sir, what's your email? Thank you.
I have a question, uh, on the year one, two and three, is the annual inspection, maintenance all included in this pricing? Or is this just the fixed one that needs fixed and painted?
Just what's on the first two pages.
So the fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year you're talking about for an annual contract?
Is not included in.
Is not included in those numbers?
We are doing an inspection year two and a clean out in year three, just to check the pace.
Yeah.
Um, that was so that I could help spread the cost over three years instead of having it required all upfront.
Um, well, my opinion. My, my opinion is, uh, I, I am, this is favorable to me, obviously, a little review by our legal team, but, uh, until we know what's going on with the future of our water project that's ongoing, I wouldn't want to risk taking down the tower, uh, in the middle of that. So until we finish our, uh, review process on that, uh, I would wanna hold off personally.
How good is this quote for? I mean, for a year?
How long?
This is a, I believe it's a sixty-day quote.
Oh.
Because like I heard some of you talking about, prices are changing constantly. Should you not want the work done until year two? I think it would still be cost-effective to sign the contract and push the work into year two because it locks the price in now. Something to consider if that's what you're doing.
Let's.
I would, I would, I would, yeah, I want a table decision till the next month.
Let's.
No, and that's fine because he's got to.
Yeah, yeah, so.
He's gotta do whatever changes in that.
Yeah.
Well, what would be a timeframe? If you, if everything was favorable and we, okay, this next month, how quick could you get it done?
Still didn't done this year.
But it would take all year?
I'm sorry?
How many days would it take?
It's still take four to six weeks.
So you could have it done like two hours before.
For, for this year's portion, four to six weeks.
Right.
Gotcha, okay.
But I've, I've gotta get contracts signed by June theoretically to where it's gonna get time done and time on the schedule for this year.
Well, that's where we're at, timeframes.
Yep.
We've gotta think about this.
If you want it done this year.
Right.
Okay.
All right, yep, let's, uh, let's leave that for legal review and, uh, we will table it till we'll put it on next month and then.
I believe my email's on there, if any of you have any specific questions or, or questions later, you're sure wanting to shoot me an email and I'll try to get those answered.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Matt's that cart treasure report, Matt and Tricker? Your treasure?
Yeah, I think you got a dead battery.
Oh, you're on.
Yeah, I think it's down real low, I'll, I'm gonna blast, I'll get a battery out in a minute. Okay, you guys all have, um. You were sent out the payroll dockets for February and March and then you also have the claims. Um, I had one other, um, situation that come up probably about a month and a half ago. It seems there was a couple that owned a house in Fishersburg, then they were selling the house on contract to another person and it ended up being two accounts being charged. So, um, I had the original owners who were selling on contract that sent me a certified letter, uh, stating that it was all right to reimburse the new people that just bought the house. So I just, it's probably gonna be around four to five thousand dollars, cause it started in two thousand eleven. So I'm gonna, I just wanted you guys to know that and I don't, I don't know if you probably need to vote on it since it is over the five thousand dollars, so I'll need your permission to go ahead and reimburse the second owners of the house.
Gotcha.
Haven't reviewed, reviewed this.
I mean, there's nothing really to review.
I was not made aware of that one. So we collected from both during that time ultimately?
I just, to me, I, I only feel it's right that they d-reimbursed it, they shouldn't have been paying double for it.
Do we have the exact amount?
I don't have the exact amount right now, I can get it figured out and then if we have a special meeting or something in between, if not, we'll do, we can vote on it if it makes a deal.
Yep, let's get the, get the documentation in there and we can do that at another meeting.
Exactly how much money?
Yep.
Okay, um, the other thing is, I also got a quote and I apologize, I did not get it to DAX to get it on, on the agenda. It is for the work order system through Keystone Voice and it is, uh, eleven ninety-five and then the, our annual maintenance would increase six hundred dollars at next year's renewal.
We'll pass that.
Yep. And it, I learned quite a bit about it when I went to the voice, uh, classes. It will actually tie in to, if the guys go out and read a meter and put it in there in the system, then it will actually pull it into utility on our side and we won't have to manually go in and put it in ourselves, which can sometimes, sometimes it gets real confusing cause you've got people that move in and move out in the middle of a billing cycle, it will tie all that stuff in together, so, um.
And it's one more integrated piece as opposed to take from here, put to here.
Right, yeah, my battery went dead.
So initially, it's eleven ninety-five and then next year it's going to be seventeen ninety-five, is that how I remember it?
Or it's gonna be six hundred next year.
This is annual maintenance, we'll increase six hundred at next renewal, that, to me, is adding on to this.
Uh, I think it, no, it's, uh, the eleven ninety-five to get it and then next, to get it and get it started, we just renewed our contract for, it's an auto renewal.
So that our main contract will go.
So next year, it'll be six hundred dollars more than what it is right now.
Add that to it, okay.
Right. Yeah, cause I called and asked the same question, cause I didn't understand.
I would make a motion to approve the, uh.
Work order.
Addition of the work order system voice. For cut, what's the cost on that there?
Eleven ninety-five.
For one thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars this year.
I'll second.
Chad?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Thank you. Do I need it back? Yeah, probably just as a reminder.
Yeah, pass that back.
Okay, and then tomorrow at nine o'clock, I also have a meeting with them for their time clock system. I know several of you guys have brought up, um, our time, timekeeping system, so they are going to call me at nine and do a virtual, show me how it works kinda thing. And there's several different things we can get in it, you can get this part or that part or do it this way or that way, so they're gonna go through all that with me tomorrow. So, um, maybe next month, we can, I may, I will have a price for you for what I think, and I'll probably refer with you, Chad, since you're our guru.
Is that why I am?
Yeah. So, and then one more thing was I've had several people call in wanting to know if we're gonna do the sidewalk, um, match.
Program?
Mm-hmm, so.
Uh, what that is, uh. We have used Cascaden Fund before, uh, to fund a, kind of a matching grant for sidewalks, in other words, if, if you would like your sidewalk done in front of your house and it's not, uh, at the point where the town is ready to replace it, um, the resident can pay half of the cost uh, and we would use Cascaden Funds to match the other half, uh, for them to redo the sidewalk in front of their house, so.
They use it for parkers here, right?
Well, we have more than just park money in the Cascaden Fund, so, um, I think the last time we did that, we committed, I would say, five thousand dollars.
It was between five and seven thousand.
So, um. It's, it's a good, it, it's a good thing, it helps, you know, beautify the town and, you know, uh, if the person's willing to do that, it gives them, uh, a stake in. mistaken beautifying their property as well, so.
How does that work if, say we have six people that wanna do this? And it's ten thousand dollars, and we've only committed five to seven, how do we?
Uh, we cap, I think we capped it before.
Kind of a first come, first served, I think.
I think, I think what we did, we, we started a list and whoever, I mean, and then they, they kinda give us estimate for all of it. And then if we had to take one off, they come off the bottom. Do you remember, Gary?
Yes, that's how we, that's how we've done it in the past. And will we, do we wanna get bids on, I mean, cause that's what we've done before is?
I think what we typically, what we did the last time is we, we built the list.
Yep.
And then we put that out for bids.
Right.
And they bid each one individually, and then we, we picked what we could do out of that. So, I would, I would support that. If someone would like to make a motion to, uh, reenact the sidewalk fund.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Amendment to that, please? Not exceed seven thousand dollars?
Works for me.
Who's second to that, Brian? Chad?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Anything else, man?
Um, I. That's all I have, thank you.
Very good. Okay, uh, next up, uh, approval minutes, uh, did the December minutes get passed down that way?
Yep, they did.
Okay, and, uh, I didn't, did January come to email? I don't remember seeing them.
January didn't know to come onto the computer.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that I wasn't missing something. Alright, so we have the approval of the December minutes as presented, has everyone, everyone's had a chance to review those, correct? Does anyone have any changes or adjustments they see needing, needing done?
I would make a motion to approve the December twenty-first, min, two thousand twenty-three minutes as presented.
I second.
Chad?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and at this time.
Don't forget my, uh, payroll dockets.
Oh, we have to vote on those, that's right. Um, okay, we have payroll dockets that were emailed out to us. Um, at this time, I would make a motion to approve payroll dockets as submitted. I'll second.
Uh, Chad?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just the claims. Alright, uh, at this time, I would suspend the, uh, regular town council meeting, uh, to open up a public hearing for, uh, ordinance four dash twenty twenty-four, uh, for additional appropriation of ARPA funds. Um, so what this is, is we have an unencumbered balance in our ARPA funds, uh, that were given to us by the federal government of forty-five thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-three cents. Those funds have to be spent this year.
Yes, unless you have them put towards a certain project after this year.
Um, so, at this time, we need to appropriate those, so that we are allowed to spend those funds. Public hearing, anyone have questions, comments, or concerns about the, uh, additional appropriation? Please come on up to the podium.
How are, how are you gonna spend that money? Are you appropriating?
Uh, so we're appropriating to spend it, more than likely it'll be spent on, uh, engineering fees, uh, for upcoming projects this year. Rub paving, things like that. At this time, I would close the public hearing and reopen the regularly scheduled town council meeting. Just closed the thing I was using. So, uh, council before us, before us, we have, uh, ordinance four dash twenty twenty-four for additional appropriations, uh, of ARPA money in the amount of forty-five thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-three cents. This time, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance four dash twenty twenty-four.
Question is, and it's going into that thirteen fifteen line on the budget? I just used the last.
Yes, I believe that's the only, that's the only line we have for.
For that, okay.
ARPA, yes.
I would make a motion to approve those funds for that appropriation.
I'll second.
Chad?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Alright, so that is approved on the first reading, and we will do second reading in the next, uh, regular scheduled meeting. Alright, uh, next item we have, uh, we have a public hearing for our sewer system expansion, uh, at this time, I would.
We're not, we're not gonna do that.
We're not doing that one? Okay.
We gotta, we gotta advertise that ten days prior.
So that one was not properly advertised, we will not be doing that one, alright, fantastic. Nice subtle. Alright, uh, next unfinished business, uh, considered resolution adopting our town council policies and procedure manual, uh, that would be resolution two, that's two oh four.
Also tabled.
Also tabled.
I put that on there just to give you all a subtle reminder.
Thank you for the subtle reminder.
Review, uh, more comment, I'll have a final draft for you in a couple days. Let's talk about it tonight.
Alright, very good, we'll table that. Uh, okay, new business, first thing, we have, uh, an expense to consider, uh, for installation of fire hydrants.
A fire hydrant.
A fire hydrant? Okay, uh, Mr. Is this a meter or a hydrant?
No, this is a, this is fire hydrant, it's all from Cooley.
John, will you explain that to us?
Yeah.
Okay, it's a flush hydrant, basically, it's a fire hydrant, you'll be putting in right at the water plant. You're gonna put valves in it, so we can, uh, close it off to the water plant, so we can flush a raw water line. Again, in overabundance of iron bacteria buildup. Haven't had to test it or anything, but I can pretty much tell you, our six inch pipe is probably down to about a three inch pipe. And that creates head pressure on your wells, and it makes them work harder.
Gotcha. So this is to, basically, before it goes into the plant?
Yes.
Gives you guys the opportunity to flush it and clean it out instead of it?
Open it up.
Go on through the system.
Open it up and try to get as much force as we can from both of our wells to flush the line out and blow that iron bacteria out of there.
Is that gonna be a, like a hot tap? Do they have to put that in hot?
They'll probably do a, um, a line stop on it.
Right, that's, same thing.
Well, if we got our wells down, they might not even have to do, do a line stop.
Okay.
If our wells are shut down, there's no water except the water that's in the pipe.
Right.
No pressure, nothing.
And that's?
We can shut the valves inside the plant, so there's no pressure coming back either.
So that's, the two lines come in from the two wellheads? And this is after that where the two come together going into the plant?
Yes, this would be right outside the plant. There is a hydrant already on three hundred, coming down from well thirteen. But it only cleans that line of three hundred. Then it comes back, goes through the cemetery, the park, and comes up Main Street here. And then that's when the Ford well comes around the building and out down the alley and connects to it.
Gotcha, alright.
Then it goes down through Eleventh Street, down Eleventh Street, down an alley, down a back easement, on Vine Street, and heads down to the plant.
Goes everywhere.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a kinda long one.
Gotcha, alright, um.
So this, I mean, you'd be able to flush all the stuff out of this pipe with your own hands?
Yeah, that is what Tom from Cooley said, if we open them all, cause we can get almost a thousand gallons a minute out of well thirteen if we open it up. It's only open like fifty percent right now. So we can get a good flushing, and we're hoping that will break everything loose. You don't want that stuff going into the plant.
Yeah, no.
Be horrid on our media.
Yep.
What's our other option if this doesn't work?
Um, use a pig, send a pig down the pipe and scrape it all up.
So we'll need the hydrant for that anyway?
With an escape, with a forty-five degree escape route, and that's what I designed for Cooley to put in.
So this is gonna have that as well?
Yes, it'll have a cleanup.
So it's all pretty much.
Uh, designed for if we have to do the pig, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
I mean, we're good to go anyway.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, it'll have three valves on each, all sides of the hydrant, plus going into the plant, so we can isolate everything.
Um, I would make a motion to approve the quote from Cooley, um, for six thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars, no sense.
I'll second.
Chad?
Oh, hold on.
Oh.
Can I ask a question before? This says all materials supplied by the town of Latell, so there's no materials in this, but?
We already have it all.
Okay.
Is that the pole burner?
So this is just their labor?
Yes.
Okay.
Chad?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Alright. And the next item, uh, is a quote for Grip Incorporated, this is for, um, a flow study. Uh, this is probably one where we need to talk to Mr. Dan.
Yeah, it, uh, Gary requested last time, um, to get a, uh, quote to do, uh, hydrant for a flow meter study on the century sewer. One of the problems that we see is we have very high INI, and, uh, we looked at the system, thought we could put five of them out there in various locations over a two month period and be able to isolate some of those problems. And, uh, that's what the quote is, it's twenty-eight five. Grip is a very good company, we've used them on, on other flow meter projects, and they do really good job.
And the purpose of this is to figure out where we have an intrusion of stormwater, basically.
Correct.
Within our, uh, sewage system, to narrow it down to the section.
Try to narrow it down in these five sections. And then, uh, depending on what we find out, and we hope for rain over the next, uh, couple months. They said they can install them in, uh, either late April this month or first of May. Uh, once we find out where the problem lies, and maybe it's all over the town. And, uh, we can isolate that, and, uh, we may have to do some, uh, small, potentially some, uh, dye testing or, uh, maybe some more flow monitoring to pinpoint and even further. But, uh, this is a good start.
This is basically step one.
Yes.
To get, as we have talked, all, from the end of last year till now, that one of the things holding us back is that wastewater treatment plant. And we're doing too much INI, too much clear water. This'll start getting that project to where we know where we're at, how much we can get out of it will help us determine how much we have to do to the plant later on down the road. But it's the first step, step one.
What, uh, uh, I know with the torrential rains that we just had, you guys basically had to man the sewer plant twenty-four seven, uh, to keep, to keep it working properly, uh, because of the amount of influx of rainwater.
Yes, we had, uh, we had a bypass overflow too, out of two manhole covers that we had to fill out the proper paperwork, and then the IDM too. I don't know if that's been forwarded to any of you or not, but it is all taken care of and handed in.
Gotcha. Uh, Madam Court Treasurer, we have the funds for this in, uh, sewer, correct?
Uh, yeah, we've got plenty of money in the sewer savings account if we need to use that to pay for it.
So.
Basically, this is layman's terms, we're getting a lot of stormwater into the sewer system that we're talking thousands and thousands of gallons, like hundreds of thousands of gallons a day.
Exactly.
And the, any clear water coming in decreases the actual capacity of our sewer plant. So, and our biggest opportunity right now is our available capacity at our sewer plant, so for every amount of clear water that we take out, we increase our actual ability for it to process what it does. So the proposal here from Grip, uh, for the installation of five, uh, five meters and doing a flow study, uh, is a total of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars and, uh, two months of monitoring. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the Grip project.
I'll second.
Gary, go ahead.
He was.
We gotta get it started.
Gary, I'll let you go first, Gary.
Uh, yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes. Close that again, alright, Chad? Alright, um, next item we have is, we have a stormwater drainage issue in Montgomery Farms. Who is speaking on that one?
I will. You go first, I'll, I'll, I'll start.
Okay. Okay, I'm on to now, um.
We were over there last year, and it just wasn't designed right. Water is, is pooling pretty badly in these soaks yards, and I, I'll, I'll shut up. I'll let them, listen to them first in the talks.
Okay.
Hey, who are you, I'm sorry? Okay.
Sure, thank you, sir. Okay. See you in the chair. There we go.
Thank you. Alright, so my name is Greg Weaver, I live at ninety-four sixty-five Birmingham Boulevard. Um, I'm here today to discuss some ongoing, but also some new issues with the Montgomery Farms. Um, I know some of you are aware of them, Dax was out, Noah's been out, Gary's been out, Chad was out three years ago. So, it, it's not a new situation by any stretch of the imagination. But with the development of the new Davis home beside us, my one neighbor who is here, Gary Baronowski, um, he has a low area at the. um, he has a low area at the back corner of his property where the drainage goes to the west, makes a sharp bend and parallels nine fifty down to a drainage point where it goes under a road to the west. Uh, he's had a low spot since he moved in. Water pools, um, mosquitoes and everything else are an issue back there. Um, I've lived there almost five years, and I've not really had a, a drainage issue per se. Um, it backs up when we get a lot of rain, but there's black corrugated under there, it percolates and it goes away. When the Davis home was built, they put a whole basement in. When they dug the basement, they had to pump it out before they could pour the footers. After they poured the footers, they had to pump it out to pour the walls. The water table is way too high out there, and it generates a ton of water. Now they have their sump pump ejecting out onto the yard, and it's flowing both ways. Runs twelve to fourteen times a day. Um, that drainage swale is perpetually wet, I mean, twenty-four-seven. Um, nothing is getting away, um, and we never, I didn't have the issues, he had the low spot in his back, and the neighbor to my east now has water standing in his backyard, Mark Lefevre, to the point that I am ruining the drainage swale trying to mow the yard. Um, if I read your ordinances correct, a drainage swale is intended for surface water. Um, it's not for sump pump, it's not for swimming pools, it's for runoff from the yard, from the roof, and from the downsides. If that is what would be there, we wouldn't have issues. Um, I showed up one day when the landscaper was at the house with the construction manager Dalton. He told him they needed to put in a French drain, and I said, you guys already have that. All you have to do is run the pipe to the corrugated, the corrugated goes down to the beehive, and it will get away. They are literally four feet away from that black corrugated, and they refused to do it. The other big issue I have, and part of the thing that we're getting into now, yeah, it may be designed wrong from the get-go, but when they built the house, i- if I, if I understand correctly all of your ordinances, a developer comes in and makes a proposal, they get the surveys done, um, they get drainage board approval and all of that, then they construct a drainage swale based on the criteria. It's up to you guys at that point in time to inspect it, and when you agree with everything, you sign off on it, and then building permits are issued. Your ordinance says that drainage swale cannot be altered. When they dug the basement, they stacked all of the basement dirt in the drainage swale. It was six foot tall back there. They altered that drainage swale from the get-go. Then, when they're all done, they come in and they try to level it out, so these people have a backyard because that's on the cul-de-sac with the twenty-five-foot setback, their deck is as far back as it can go because of the drainage easement. So, thing to do is kinda level it off, makes it look like you have a backyard, until the gentleman was there days ago, and I was out back, and I said, you don't want this house. You have no backyard, and it's perpetually wet, and your basement's wet. They had two children, two and four, not doing that many favors with mold and mildew in the basement, and a sump pump that runs non-stop. So, there's just, there's a lot of issues going on, I, I totally agree with Dax. But we've doubled or tripled the issues by allowing a builder to build a house, dump their high-water table sump pump into a drainage swale. The drainage swale can't get to the catch basin because a previous neighbor on the last house out of his yard raised the level, I think you guys saw that, it's up a foot to two foot, and the water can't get uphill. Even if it got down to that point, the catch basin isn't filled in around it, it's all eroded, water won't go anywhere anyways. And then the new section that should have been inspected before they started issuing building permits has the black corrugated laying off of the ground. It's not tied into the catch basin at all. So I don't know who's at fault, I think it's, it's difficult for an outside building inspector to be aware and, and enforce all of the ordinances, even though it was brought to his attention. But right now, we're burying the brunt of it, we have standing water in our backyards twenty-four-seven. Um, and I welcome anybody to come out and take a look right now. Dax knows what it looks like, um, probably the last month that Noah was in, and it was dry. You could walk around back there. If you're gonna walk now, you better bring some waders. Um, and you're gonna tear it up, because I am with a push mower, I got stuck with my riding mower, so I can't use that. Um, and just really unhappy with the situation. I don't know how it was allowed to dump that kind of water and go against every ordinance that you guys have. You know, you, you specifically say what drainage swales are used for. You talked about a drainage swale that needs to be sodded. They didn't do that. They threw down a little grass seed and straw, they haven't watered it yet. So the straw's gone, the grass seed is in my yard, and so is all the mud and silt that's coming down. And it's a mess. Um, one other item that just, that you guys were made aware of, uh, also, we still have no street signs in Montgomery Farms. We have no streetlights in Montgomery Farms. Your ordinance even says we need yard lights. Nobody has yard lights, I don't know that you really enforce that, but going by your ordinances, street signs, streetlights, and I hope, I hope, I hope, that somebody, when a building permit is pulled, is taking that information and giving it to nine-one-one to enter into the data center. I know Mark's son had a seizure. Mark is a nurse, so am I, neither of us were home. His wife panicked, called nine-one-one, we can't send an ambulance, we don't have your house number in our database, after they had lived there two years. That's inexcusable. What if a construction worker's hurt? Can't send an ambulance, we don't know her, it's not in our database. Derek called the police because we had construction workers while they were trying to do homework on a nice night at the Davis house, pounding, well, you guys know as well, anybody that has children, if a child has an excuse not to do homework, they're not gonna do it. They were sitting at the table, that was a distraction. I heard it, he called the police, they didn't know where his house was. And you had lived there for about three years?
Two, two avenues.
And they still weren't in the nine-one-one database.
So, first and foremost, I'll start with the easiest thing first, and then we'll get to Dax to talk about the drainage. Streetlights, street signs, all those kind of things, those are the responsibility of the developer, so we'll have to follow up with Oakmont. Same folks with Tuscany, uh, to make sure that that's taken care of.
May I speak? There is not gonna be any more permits issued until those things are put in, Dennis has already stated that.
Alright, very good. Uh, second thing, there's, some of those issues are, uh, the responsibility of an HOA that's supposed to be in place out there that isn't. So we have that problem with multiple Oakmont developments, so, uh.
No, I understand, wh- where does the HOA come in on following town ordinances?
Uh, there are requirements in the covenants that they have to help enforce, so.
No, wait, again, where does the HOA come in on town ordinances? That's, uh, HOA is gonna get street signs installed or streetlights?
A lot, a lot of places that the HOA is responsible for making sure, street signs and all those things go.
In no subdivision that have an HOA, have I ever been involved with street signs or streetlights? That's done before the houses are done.
I understand, but that's a maintenance and things like that in the future, so, but.
Well, and, and again, don't force an HOA down our throats because we don't want it.
Only if it's in the covenants, it's required.
But it's not.
Okay, well, we'll take care of that.
You and I have had that discussion before, it is for the new section, but it's not for the original.
At the end of the day, the developer is responsible for arranging the streets and the streetlights are in, so.
I understand.
If we already had that, we'll make sure that's taken care of. Alright, uh, if we can talk to Dax now about the drainage issue, so that we can figure out, get his perspective and.
Well, and my last thing, and, and this isn't a slam on Dax, but I called Town Hall, and I said, how do we get something done? I know Gary's been out, you've been out. I mean, this has been ongoing for three years, guys. This isn't new information. And now we're gonna get street signs and streetlights, but again, it's been going on for three years. So now we have a major issue where we can't mow our backyards, we can't do anything. There is standing water, and it's gonna be a health concern this summer with mosquitoes. So I call, and I'm told, email info@lapelindiana.org. Did that on March twenty-fifth. Haven't heard a word. I have not had one correspondence back.
We spoke on the phone twice since then.
No, you told me to email Lapel.
Oh, I, I apologize for that.
And I sent, and I sent that, and you said, and I'll make sure Dax gets it.
Okay, and I, I apologize, I, I have been pretty much by myself and just got somebody hired, I apologize, I didn't.
Again. I expected it was gonna be Dax that got back to me because he was very much aware of what was going on. But, again, I've not heard from anybody. And at least, you know, if you're gonna set up this policy, at least take five seconds and just email, we'll get back to you in the near future. But when it goes crickets, it sounds like or feels like you're hiding behind voicemail or email. Um, and again, it's not new issues, guys, it's been going on for quite some time.
Uh, I have one question, and this is, this is the house that's at that very corner, correct? On the, on the back, the little cul-de-sac right there?
Little eyebrow.
The, the one that's filled in, in the gap between you and on the other side?
And Derek, yep, that, that ranch house, the city startup house.
Okay. That's the, and this is, on the original plan for that subdivision, there was a road there. And they turned it into another lot.
Yep.
I'm wondering if, when the drainage and things were originally put in, I'm wondering if, if they're having that much problem with water in that basement, I'm wondering if something got cut through, uh, and the drainage is going into the basement instead of working its way around. I, I'm, I'm just, I'm speculating, so.
Yeah, and, because there was a question, you guys were out, somebody was out, and one guy was checking, and he said, well, we show a line that goes back through here, and he marked it. So when they dug the basement, we paid attention, there's nothing there, and there's nothing dr- draining into it. Actually, there was two roads, there was supposed to be one that went out to nine fifty, and one that dead-end beside me. And, and like you said, then it was only two houses back there.
Right.
And now that plaque got changed, and they squeezed too much in.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if that caused an issue that the drainage didn't change.
The line that he's talking about, we, we had to witch it, because we couldn't find it, and we could have been witching a trench that was dug there for a road. We could have been witching anything.
Gotcha.
But that's how we came across that line.
Yeah, and then when, when they dug it, we, we paid attention, because it sat there for a while.
Right.
And, uh, there was nothing pouring in, but the water table's high. I mean, it's just a, a fact of life right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weaver, Mr. Dax.
Mm-hmm. Well, um, first off, uh, you're on the agenda, so that, that's what I think the miscommunication was. Have these people talk about it in a very public forum, so that, that was, that's why you're here. So obviously, just listen to, nothing was hidden behind anything, it's a major agenda to discuss, so. Um, which it is a major problem, so. And, um, my suggestion is, I mean, I think you almost need to have an engineering team go look at hydraulics here, uh, number one. Number two, I'm not sure if the ordinance specifically states anything about sump pump lines.
It does.
So if it does, you gotta, you gotta enforce it, right? I mean, you can't just have people putting their lines out on any yard at any place at any time. That has to be enforced, and that's really kinda your building department, which I know is part-time, just like I am, uh, essentially a part-time volunteer, uh, person for you all right now, um. Uh, so, and I want to make sure that the reason why this is on the agenda was this, when I walked out there, you could see, and that was last year, you could see that it was a, gonna be a major problem.
We, when we were out there three years ago, uh, we had our engineer at the time, RQAW, uh, they went out and did some review, and if I remember correctly, that was communicated to the developer that they needed to fix the drainage, and that was part of, for the new section, uh, because the, originally the new section was supposed to be dry pond, and then they wanted to make it a wet pond, and there was a lot of discussion there, and that was all supposed to be fixed when they created the new drainage for that corner. Uh, because you have Greg's house, and I think there was three more houses to where the, that current section ended before the new construction started.
Was my house and two more.
Two more, yeah, because the one that was on the end is the one that built it up and created the issue. That was to be fixed by the engineer, uh, when they were doing the drainage for section four. Section four?
Yeah, phase four.
Phase four, uh, so that, that has been presented to the developer in the past, uh.
Chad, a question for you. The original developer was Braun Hardwood LLC. He passed away. But he set his son, or son-in-law, uh, as the owner of Hallmark Homes, so he's running that. I don't know who owns the development.
If that communication never made it through.
Well, he had, he had cancer, and then he passed away, and I think it, it happened pretty suddenly. So I don't know who or what it got communicated to, and I know there was a question, I think even Dax had when everybody was out, was, had this been deeded over or accepted by the town? And you guys were going to be looking into that, and then I never heard anything more.
A- as of now, no, uh, from what we can see, the, the primary, the substantial completion has not been, and I don't believe that anything has been delivered to the town.
Okay.
So, this is on the agenda, because I could feel their frustration, and, uh, they don't deserve to have this water problem. I know that there's not a tremendous amount of stormwater money out there to fix it, but something's gotta be done. Before you, before the neighborhood is accepted by the town, I would strongly suggest that the original, yes?
Oh, no, I, I was, I, I was just making sure that I was in queue to raise my hand, I apologize, I was trying to cut you off. Sir, um, what was the, so it was Braun Hardwood LLC, and was that the developer of the actual? Was that the homeowner, or was that the, the developer of the sites?
That was the developer of the infrastructure and the sites. And then he's the one that got phase four, or whatever you call it, to the east. He got that started before he passed away.
So it wouldn't be him, though, it would be his LLC, right? So, a- as my partner just mouthed to me, LLCs do not die, so. So a- as my partner just mouthed to me, LLCs do not die, so. So they're somewhere, so yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, there are bond requirements, I think that that's the first thing that we love to do is is.
That's kind of where I was heading tonight is there are performance and maintenance bonds.
Yes.
We need to make sure that they get pulled to fix, this issue's ridiculous for them, um.
And can we ask one favor? Can we get the the septic or the sump pump shut off? That's what's causing all of our headaches right now. And you, it is an unbelievable amount of water that is coming out on the daily.
I would say in Chad's opinion, uh more than likely, if we fixed the drainage, the swale, that might eliminate the flooding and creating the sump pump problem.
Well, but if the sump pump is tied into that black corrugated.
Right.
And if they do that now, then things dry out that you guys can work out there. Right now, you cannot work out there, I can't mow my yard, he can't mow his yard. Um it it's a swamp, I I mean, I'm not trying to to be over-exaggerating, come out and walk, it's it's ridiculous.
I'm sure those people don't want it running all the time either.
No.
No, but it's just not fair to them that this situation exists and so I, my suggestion, one reason I I more than can I, one thing I have to say about it is go back to the original plaque. Need to really scour and dive deeply into the original plaque, see what was required of the developer during the time of approving the original plaque. Streetlights, um street signs, you are, he is correct, typically, street signs are in place prior to homes being built and that is merely just watching the develop, the the plan department, which we really don't have, watching the developer and inspecting their process to make sure that that is done in the in the primary plaque process. And then typically, addresses are done before a house is built, the addresses are sent to the county, the EMS system, uh and to the post office. And that is typically done by a plan department as well. So I would suggest that we we look at the history of the plaque, look at.